Good evening, welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, September 23rd. Call the meeting to order at 6:39 PM. Notice our chair is not present this evening.
With that being said, I'd like to make a motion that Scott Bastarash preside as chair for this meeting.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll move right along. Sorry about the delay in getting started, some IT technical difficulties. Speaking of IT, we'll jump right into the surplus equipment request for the IT department. Third read. Any concerns?
I have no concerns. If you do not, I will make a motion that we declare the IT equipment as listed and itemized in this to be declared as surplus and to be disposed of in an appropriate manner.
I second that. I have no other concerns with it. We've read it a couple of times now. Hearing nothing else, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In a minute, so we got a couple more minutes, we'll run right down, we'll do whatever we can quickly. Section seven, it looks like, we have a letter of resignation. So we received a letter of resignation from Patricia Sem. She is stepping down effective September 30th from the Board of Trustees of the library. In her letter, she was very eager to learn and expressed her gratitude for learning what she did as quickly as she did, but life goes in different directions and she's got to step aside. So we appreciate her time and everything she gave to the town and to that commission. Thank you very much. And we'll add it to the running list.
I'm set to advertise everything starting October 1st, so we will get the notices out this week.
And we've got a few more minutes. We'll actually, when we're talking about appointments and resignations, we can jump right into the appointments to the Open Space Committee. So we have two letters of interest. One is a representative from the Planning Board, Joseph Newton, looking to take that Planning Board representative seat on the Open Space Committee. And the second is one that is not currently a vacancy or a position, but Mike Schaefer is interested if we would entertain increasing the number of seats on that committee and having, you know, I think, committee member at large, or whatever we want to call it, allow him to participate in that committee and through that process of the open space plan revitalization. The easy one first before, it doesn't take a whole lot of discussion, for the, for Joseph Newton.
I am in favor of this, and I will make a motion to appoint Joseph Newton for a term of one year, starting September 23rd, 2024, ending June 30th, 2025, to the Open Space Committee.
I will second that. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now regarding the additional one, the Select Board does control how many? We currently have seven, well, six, with one vacancy still. This, once that's filled, will be at seven, and Mike would be an eighth.
Correct.
I've served on it before, I know it can be a lot, and there's a lot of tasks, and if Mike is willing to, I have no reason to, you know, we don't usually have extra people looking to help out, and it only comes around, I think, ten years, seven years?
Seven years.
Every seven years. So I would not be opposed to extending that out to an eighth position, and allowing him to participate as well.
Well, since I was formally elected and sworn into this board, I have openly and frequently advocated for people to come forward and become part of the process and to participate. So I would find myself being hypocritical if I were to stand against this appointment at this time, which I would not do anyways. I have no objections to this, and with there being the lift that there can be and the commitment, I think, in this case, more hands will make for better work.
Yeah. And I think I'll leave that with a caveat, that if there are other residents in town for any of the open spots, but if there's interest in even above and beyond what the availability of spots are, those letters of interest, they matter, and they do help, and they move things forward. You never know how it works out, and this letter is one of those cases where there's not a spot, but there's the opportunity. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to appoint Mike Schaefer to the, for a term of one year, starting September 23rd, 2024, ending June 30th, 2025, to the Open Space Committee.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is all we could run through real quick until our 6:45, we made it just in time. We will be getting a presentation for, from Phoebe Walker, and Jeff, if you're going to come up and have any conversation or input, you're welcome to. Phoebe's going to do her thing with her slideshow. No need to put you on the spot, but I did. Thank you for coming in. And this is in relation to the opioid settlement fund use and the proposal that's out there. So I will turn it over to you.
Great. Do I introduce yourself to the viewing?
Yes, Jeff McAndrews, Chair of the Board of Health, Phoebe Walker.
I'm the Director of Community Health at the Franklin Regional Council of Governments. So that basically just means my job is to do things to help the towns of Franklin County be healthier and the people of Franklin County. So I'm here specifically to present the regional project that the Irving Board of Health has, is involved in through the health district that you all are part of at the Cooperative Public Health Service at the Franklin Regional Council of Governments. So, whoa. So Jeff's been at a number of meetings where we've sort of kicked the tires on this, and we've come before you with a presentation, knowing that you did the work of going to the town at town meeting and getting money approved, and now you'd like to hear what we have in mind. So, more to say?
Yeah, I just wanted, Scott was at our last meeting, which was very helpful. I wanted to bring Phoebe here, and I thought it'd be very appropriate for Phoebe to explain kind of the overarching settlement itself, how it was distributed, why Irving has the funds that it has, why other towns don't have the funds that they have, and the best way that we can distribute them in a collaborative manner that is most effective for the community.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, so let's just dig into it at the very highest level. You know, we have this money because the different attorneys general in 29 states negotiated with the pharmacies and the drug makers about how to, how to come even anywhere close to compensating for the harm they've caused in this country. So there's about $900 million thus far, there's more coming, that comes to the state of Massachusetts. 60% of it stays in a kitty at the state to come out to grants. 40% of it comes to the cities and towns, and it all has to be spent in one of these categories that we'll go over in a minute. As you know from town meeting, we had to, there was quite a bit of bureaucratic moving the money around, how the Department of Revenue told us we had to do it. Now, finally, every town, I believe, should have it in their special purpose revenue fund, and checks can be written. You know, we don't need to go back to town meeting anymore in order to, with every project, unless that's something you set up. So I've just, my job has been to try to kind of ride herd on the whole thing, understand what is going on at the, at the state level, give folks guidance, town administrators, how to get ready for town meeting. One of the main requirements, the first requirement of the money is to listen to people impacted by the opioid crisis, and so we did have a regional listening session last winter where a lot of different boards of health got together and listened online to a lot of people with some sort of family connection or personal connection to this issue, who, who got to share what, how they thought the money should be spent. And then in response to that, we've been sort of going around looking for people who can provide the help that people said they needed. And that's basically what Jeff and I are here to present tonight, is that, is that plan. We also got a bunch of data that we, we tried to get, towns asked a lot, for a lot of information about, well, what does this look like here? You know, what does it look like in Irving? And so we did get information that I know I've shared with, with you all about, at a small level as we could. It's very hard to get data in towns as small as all of ours, but we were able to collect what we could to give that to boards of health and select boards in their thinking. So, I'm not going to bother your time on the town expenditure process, I think you know what that is, that's what we're doing here tonight. Just big high level, and Jeff, please jump in anytime you want. These are the allowable expenses. So these are the different kinds of things you can spend the money on. There is a hyperlink there in the slides you guys got that takes you directly to the like eight-page list, and you can see it's a wide variety of both prevention, harm reduction, and treatment and recovery. So everywhere along the spectrum, from people not ever starting, to people not doing as much harm to themselves as possible, to people getting into treatment, not dying, people recovering and having a lifetime of, of recovery and supporting their families as well. So, the interesting thing that has happened for your community is that it is, it is very surprisingly different how the money is allocated in Massachusetts. And so one of the things that I've done is to really dig and dig and dig to figure out why different towns got such variable amounts of money. And this slide basically lays out for you how that works. And what happened is when the attorneys general all got together, they said, how big of an impact have opioids made in America? Let's analyze it at the county level, because in every other state, counties are something, right? And so they said, well, let's, let's get all the data we can for a county, overdose deaths, OUD diagnoses, how much drugs were actually shipped to that county in this period of time? And that, they added all that up, they took every county in America, in the 29 states, right? And they made the impact of the opioids on that county. And that's where the impact of opioids stops in the formula. So there's nothing about how much money you're getting in Irving that has anything to do with the level of opioid use in Irving. And this is something that we, none of us understood when the money first came. So then they divide that settlement, each of the settlements up by that tiny, you can imagine what all of Franklin County's number is, it's .0076112, whatever, of the whole state, of the whole country. Then they divide that up by town, and when they were trying to sit there in their big negotiating rooms in DC or wherever it was, they thought, well, how can we tell which towns are biggest in the county? Oh, I know, we'll look at their census of government, we'll look at the number of people that work for that town in education, healthcare, public welfare. And that's because in other states, counties give towns money, right? Like counties often will be the formal part of government, and they might have a village of Irving, of the county of Franklin, you know, and they'd give you some money to run your, to run your town. So they said, well, we'll just look at that number. So the end result is that essentially, if you have school staff in your town budget, you're getting dramatically more money than towns in regional schools. Because we don't do public welfare and healthcare at the local level in Massachusetts. So it's, it's nutty. So I'll give you, here's two examples. In this case, you've got the town of Roe and the town of Shelburne. You can see that the town of Roe, which has about, I don't know, 400 people, and the town of Shelburne, which has 2,000. Over here, where the education staff are, because Roe has its own school, you can see there's 22 people there. In Shelburne, there isn't even an education line because they're part of the Mohawk District. So just keep that in mind. Same deal over here, Conway has its own school, Colrain is in the Mohawk District, also no school staff listed in the town budget. And for you guys, here's Irving, you've got these staff, here's Gill, not a dramatically differently sized community, but one which is in a two-town school district, no school staff, right? So what that means is here's Irving and Gill in the blue, you're getting $200,000 nearly over 18 years, and Gill's getting about $12,000. So it is really surprising, and I think because our numbers are so small here, it is what's more shocking, and we were the first people to really notice it. So, I mean, I've talked to the governor's office, I've talked to the BSAS, I've talked to the Commissioner of Public Health, I've talked to the person in charge of giving the grants, the Attorney General's office, who signed off on this thing, and they've all said, this is how it is, and the only way to make it better is to be regional in your thinking about how to spend the money, because everybody got everybody else's money, essentially. So, and then you can here see some other examples, like the Buckland or Colrain and Conway example there on that page. So, based on that, the 15 towns that share public health, nursing, and epidemiology and health education here through the COG, said, well, what can we do together that would reduce opioid use and prevent it? And so your, your district, you're, you're, you have the distinction of being in two districts. You are the host of the Eastern Franklin District, which is the red crosses on the slideshow, and then you're in this nursing and health education and epidemiology district of, that's based at the COG, the dark blue one. So each of these different groups is planning or thinking differently about how they want to share or not share their funds based on their size. As you can imagine, Greenfield is getting the vast majority of the money in Franklin County, and so they are planning on their own, but a lot of other communities are planning This is how much money comes in over the whole 18 years to the 15-town district that you're a part of. So you can see that, on average, we're getting about $34,000 a year across those 15 towns. Not a massive amount of money to try to turn the tide of opioid addiction, right? And you can see that you, Conway, and Roe are getting sort of the larger amounts based on your elementary school status. So here is what the group has come up with in conversation with Jeff, and with the rest of the Board of Health, and with town staff and others, and in response to the desires expressed by the people who came to our listening session. Do you want to talk about these?
So the COG had different nonprofit groups reach out to them, the Recover Project, the Moms Who Care funding requests for support for pregnant people, opioid use disorder, the CHD, and then we said, yeah, and then in discussion with Scott, we set aside $5,000 looking towards supporting family members, dealing with families who have opioid use They submitted letters to us, I don't, do you have the letters?
They're on the FERCog page.
Okay.
And I think I sent them along a while ago.
I can forward them back in.
Yeah.
Okay. So they sent letter requests of like, dollar amount of what they'd be looking for and where those funds would be allocated. The Recover Project is looking at adding recovery meetings in Western County, North County. The Moms Who Care, they're kind of a unique group, and they do total support around mother who is under, who has opioid use disorder. So it takes a lot of resources for that one person, but they do total care, is my understanding.
For like 18 months. They follow them while they're pregnant, during the birth, navigating what's going on with the Department of Children and Families, because that's a part, important part if you're giving birth, and then for about six or eight months after.
Yeah, so, and what we decided there was, on top of the initial request, which I think was, it was less than $2,000.
Right.
For, we, Irving would reach out to support another, potentially Irving resident, or preferentially Irving resident specifically, and funding through that due to the ability that we have. And then the CHD does a lot of, they support people in recovery, so getting IDs, navigating paperwork, things like that, establishing people and returning them back to some sort of a set of normalcy, to be able to support them moving forward. So those were the three groups, and then we're still looking at the support for families. Some ideas have been thought about, families being able to reach out to us, but we're still in the early stages of figuring out exactly what that would look like.
Right, could be a support group, could be a mini grant program.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
So that's kind of what our board has looked at. The Board of Health voted and agreed that this would, we feel, be in our best interest for this year going forward, and then revisiting it annually to keep looking at if this is still a need, if there's better resources that we can use. I expressed at the COG during the Oversight Community Meeting, seeing how the distribution of funds was, obviously, isn't necessarily correlative to the actual effect on our community, not to disparage or talk, say that there's not an effect on our community, because there is, but we need to make sure that we're also supporting everyone in our greater Franklin County, while also taking care of the Irving residents. So we felt that this was the best way for us to at least start, and that way the funds aren't just sitting there, because they're doing absolutely no one any good. one any good collecting dust.
Thanks. And I think our current proposal is that we would do this for two years, we're already a quarter of the way through this one.
Correct.
So, um, and then we would, we would make sure that, one thing I think we're committing to ourselves is to do, go back to listening to people also and hear, what, what did we miss, what more is there to say? Um, and we can actually listen to people closer to home now that we'll have some, uh, potentially some more recovery capital closer to Irving. Um, so, uh, yeah, so that's, that's our proposal.
The only question I have, uh, thank you for that, Phoebe. Uh, because I know when I sat through the meeting with all of you a little while ago, the thought of trying to get all of that information captured and relayed out to the public, I said, yeah, Phoebe's gonna be much better than I will.
What you guys would have been fine.
Yeah.
But I'm always happy to come.
The 16,000, 327?
Yeah.
Um, per year?
Yeah.
Okay. And so Brian, are we able to authorize the expenditure for both FY '25 and '26? Or do we need to do that in, uh, at a future date?
I have told these guys that they're only to invoice you for the first year. I, I think it would, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it would be, be cleaner if they invoiced you on July 1st or whatever for the second year, yeah.
So I think what you're communicating is for our budgeting purposes for FY '26, we should be looking at making sure that this is the budget plan that we put in place for the opioid funds for FY '26.
Right.
Perhaps to check back in, if you don't mind, with Scott and Jeff and I, as we figure out that last TBD, because you authorized more money than this at your town meeting.
We authorized 30, yeah.
Right, so we could potentially...
Well, the other thing is that, you know, I would hate to authorize it for '26 when, if you're reaching back out and people are reaching back out to you, we may find that these four categories are now six categories.
Right.
And it's, you know, upwards of 28,000 instead of 16, so I thought we could just keep it cleaner and just do the FY '25 approval.
If we can do FY '25 for tonight, and then at least start with a placeholder plan as we begin the FY '26 budgeting with this as our initial plan, and then if it evolves...
We modify it as time goes on.
Exactly.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
But you, you absolutely have sufficient funding, uh, that was approved by the voters. And I think just to the point that Jeff was making, the first year, actually also Phoebe made this point, the bureaucratic red tape that existed around how to even store these funds before we could even spend the funds, took over a year. So there is a year's worth of those funds that were received that have just been sitting in stabilization, waiting to be appropriated. So we appropriated 30,000 issues because there was two years of funding ready to be appropriated, but in future years, we don't necessarily need to do that every year. And Phoebe brought up another point, they now corrected this complicated process that exists, and so we could also have a conversation on moving the money to a different fund that makes it a little easier for this conversation to be had. We could do either, so. A lot of evolutions just on the bureaucratic piece that slowed this down, so.
I, I like the idea of looking at this through a larger lens, based on my past professional and personal experience, um, with family members and addiction. I, I understand that Irving is not, never will be, an island as it comes to this, and if we can work collaboratively, the funding can be leveraged to do, um, much better work. I do appreciate the openness for flexibility, reevaluating what you're gonna do and where you're gonna do it. Uh, the one thing I would ask to that is, it's real tough to gather data, we've already recognized that, but I like whatever data I can get my brain on to evaluate, um, the impact and future decisions, but I am in favor of this as it stands now.
Scott asked the same thing in the meeting we had with him.
I'm shocked.
And I, uh, I did go back to all three of the vendors and say that, just confirming that they're willing to share data, one of them already sent me the zip code for every single person getting peer recovery coaching. Um, so they're very willing, yeah, and we'll continue to collect that and, and share it with you. And yes, there were people from Irving in the group. Um, as there were on the other data, which I sent you a long time ago, but that little, I don't know if you, if you've seen it in particular, it's like a one-pager about the CPHS district, and so it's like, how many people in Irving are on buprenorphine, how many overdoses have there been over the last few years, you know? This is definitely a problem here in this town too, for sure.
Yeah.
But it is, as you know.
Can we redistribute all that information?
So one of the comments I made, uh, in the last meeting, uh, at the Board of Health meeting, was, um, liking the regional approach, but also not losing focus on the town of Irving and making sure that we earmark, I would say the majority of our funds that we're receiving are for the regional use, because that's, they were improperly allocated throughout the region as it, as it was. Um, but making sure that we earmark some that is held back for our own local use as we do see and find, uh, more information or more need as they arise over the, you know, over the coming years. This is a long plan, it's not, you know, just a two-year plan, so we've got,
Right.
You know, a decade and a half, almost two decades' worth of work to do with this. So just making sure that we do reserve back a little bit in case we're working with the school system, with the public health system, with, you know, fire chief, uh, police chief, and we're identifying issues that we need to address, we have some pocket that's available that we can do. So, and I think this accomplishes that.
Gas cards to visit people in treatment, you know, things like that, yeah.
It can be anything. What language do you need for a motion? Is it just authorize the release, authorize the plan? I was trying to look at...
The authorization in the town meeting vote was for the Select Board to work with the Board of Health. So the, the voters have given the authority to the two boards, so if you're okay with this, proactively, we've already set up the accounting codes in the accounting system, so it works with the Board of Health. So it really is just an authorization to allow the Board of Health to proceed with the FY '25 spending plan.
That is the motion I'll make. I'll make a motion to authorize the Board of Health to, uh, enact the spending plan as proposed for FY '25 in the amount of $16,327.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you. We realize, I realized we had one last slide, which, which will not make any difference to your vote, but should I hope reassure you that this is just in case you're wondering exactly what sections of the abatement terms each of these projects fits into, so that you know that you are doing the right thing. And I've also told Brian, I'm happy to report, to be one of your reporters in the dreaded opioid portal,
Yes.
Um, because everything has a portal now.
Yes.
Um, and, uh, you know, that we, we are still keeping this whole total under the amount of money at which we legally need to report, thanks to the small amount of money coming into the region, but, um, but I'm here to help out with that, if you need it.
Thank you, much appreciated.
Thanks. Should I do this later?
Thank you both.
Somebody's gonna tell Dosey whether this is on or not.
I will log it all off for good. Thank you both.
Always a pleasure, sir. All right. I see two people here waiting. I'm gonna quickly, uh, there's, there's a very easy one, review of the FY '25 winter road salt and sand procurement, not a lot of, uh, discussion related to this one. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Fantastic. So?
So, yes, it's that time of year again, um, for winter salt, salt procurement. So through the state V H 119 salt contract, there was only one bidder for our, for our district, um, and that was Eastern Salt again. Um, guess there's no competition out this way.
In the past, we've had a mixture. Are we not doing that?
We are doing that, so at the end of last season, we stocked up on,
Okay, so we have enough.
So we have that already in the salt shed now. Yep, and we mix that, we mix that along with the, with the straight salt.
We do in-house mix here with it, yeah. All right.
Yes.
Thank you.
That, that's why it is only just a regular winter salt this time. Next year, it'll be, it'll be both again.
Okay.
Yep.
Any concerns with that?
I am okay with it, and I will make a motion to utilize Massachusetts procurement contract, V E H 119 for the road salt procurement for FY 2025, and further au- further to authorize Glenn McCrory, Highway Superintendent, to be the signatory of the contract.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I'll sign it tomorrow and send it off.
All right, thank you, sir. Board, may I copy?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night.
Thank you. I know we have one other gentleman waiting to, he's got some agenda items, we'll get him up here. Mr. Sanders. Uh, back up to the top, we have, uh, section number two is the review of engineering, oh, excuse me, uh, yeah, we can start with that one. Do you have any, uh, the proposal for care drive sewer extension?
Section two.
Two.
Two, yeah.
I was gonna try to put a proceeding memo in there and it just was easier to explain it tonight. So this is the same agreement that you saw two meetings ago.
Yep.
And we had discussed having the table broken into more definition between sewer and waste and water. So if you scroll to page, is four?
It's seven of there.
You're right, this is a long one, seven.
Yeah.
They've now appropriated those, those costs into the two buckets. And we had initially been talking about proceeding with tasks one, two, and three, the funding source that you have available to you is specifically in the wastewater fund. So at this time, we can safely proceed with steps one, two, and three for the wastewater portion. I need to identify the specific funding source for the water, we currently do not have a matching appropriation in the water fund. With that being said, um, Phil Bembry, Leslie Brandon, myself had a meeting with our legislative delegation. Scott was with us as well, um, a week ago? I think it was a week ago.
Yeah.
And Representative Whipps has confirmed for us that she was successful in getting a hundred thousand dollar appropriation in the housing bond bill specifically for Irving, specifically for this project to work on utility improvements. All it requires is a request from the Select Board to access the funding. So, that is another source that is available to us, obviously we don't have access to it tonight, but if that was something that the three of you are interested in understanding how we specifically access, access it, and is it reimbursables, or is it an upfront? Those, the nuance, I'm not completely up to speed on, I can get that clarified for you.
Yeah, as I say, if we can get it back, at, at least we could use that hundred thousand, uh, towards the water portion.
Get that portion.
Task, yeah, task one, two, and three, and at least now we're full complement of one, two, and three can be done.
Exactly.
Focus on four, five, six, and four, five, and six.
I mean, and as we discussed before, getting one, two, and three done really allows us to have refined numbers to seek the, the larger grants that we're gonna need to, to really make this happen.
Thank you for that. So did some quick math, uh, we'd only be authorizing for tasks one, two, and three, looks like it's 89,025, not, not to exceed that. For the sake of moving it forward for any more discussion if we need it, I will make a motion that we engage tie-in bond for professional engineering services, uh, for senior housing, pump station, and utility improvements, uh, within their proposal for task one, preliminary design, task two, final design, and task three permitting, with a total dollar amount not to exceed 89,025, and to authorize town administrator Brian Smith to be the signatory on any and all contracts needed.
Second.
You have everything you need?
That takes care of that.
Pete, you have everything you need?
No.
I meant for this. All those in favor? Aye.
And would you like me to reach out to A and F to see what would be necessary to access to those funds?
Please, if we can put it on the next agenda.
Okay, I'll reach out this week?
Perfect.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You have one more item?
Yes.
Section eight.
Section eight. I'm gonna turn it over to you and let you speak to what that request is.
Okay, the, um, recently, the Water Department, we received a request from Ralph Sem. Um, it was in regards to separating the water supply to the apartments, uh, weatherheads from, um, the French King Store there. Trying to, currently, Mr. Sem owns both properties, and with the sale, it would be feasible and clearer and everything if, if a meter stayed on the property of whichever parcel that was sold. Um, you know, one would be with the apartments, the other one would stay with the store. Trying to figure out, we've, um, come up with method number one, which would be a split in the store, um, after thinking about this and everything, it would work, but it doesn't give us the free total access that we need to, uh, curb stop, shut off, if we had to shut the power off, or not the power, the water to either one of those parcels. So the best method would be basically to put in a new service line off the main on Sem Drive, and run that straight to his, there's a pit that was, uh, where the old well was for that parcel, and put the meter in there, or do a pit with the meter and a valve like he currently has, feeding both the store and the apartments. Our recommendation to make it cleaner and less problems further down the line, you never know who the owners are or what could happen, um, our recommendation would be to put a, a new service line off the main, new meter, and with a curb stop, a shut off.
This would involve a fair amount of excavation?
Yes.
Through his parking lot and...
Correct.
And at whose expense?
Not ours. It would, it would be however they work it out, I'm not sure how, how that would go.
Yeah, but it would be a private.
It's a, it would be a private, yeah.
We own to the curb stop.
Right. Just want to be clear.
Yeah, that's important. Uh, yeah, so I, you know, I know we, we had looked at the, the map that you had that laid it out, we do have it in our packet, and I, I knew I had seen it. There's a couple of reasons why I, I agree with your logic on going with the second one, which moving it to a new, uh, curb stop on the parcel. If there's, uh, future changing of ownership, you're leaving a shut off and a meter in a third party's personal property, and it just doesn't make sense.
Correct.
Um, it'll be all new owners, and who knows if the store changes hands, and now you have a third new owner that's now party to the decision that was made to keep their meter and their shut off to their parcels on somebody else's land, and not only on their land, but in their, with the other proposal of number one, in their building, on their personal property. So, uh, it just doesn't make sense to me, uh, and while I understand that it will incur cost to the owner to do it this way, it's just the unfortunate way it works. Um, if we're, if his desire is to split it, I would be looking at option two of, uh, as you delineated, it's about 185 linear feet from the curb to, uh, that second pump, give or take, based on the map.
Yep.
And, you know, that's the one I would go forward with. I don't know what you need for formal, you know, authorization, approval.
I think, so we don't have an application, because this is not a new service, a formal application was never submitted to the Water Department, there was a request to do this final water read for a closing, we couldn't fulfill the request based on the, the current setup that exists. So that started the back and forth between the parties and, and the Water Department. So I think the question is, method number one, the way you described it, is the current proposal
Correct.
From the parties. So I guess the question to the Water Commissioners is, is method number one acceptable?
Okay.
So I think that's the first question, and if, if it is, then we'll tell them, if it is not, we will tell them. If it is not, and therefore your preference is blank, we can communicate the Commissioner's
So I'll, I'll weigh in, I've already said it, but I'll weigh in again, um, my, my thoughts on proposal number one that's in front of us is no. Uh, it's not acceptable to me to break it down that way, and although there's a split and it physically meets the, the need of splitting it and having the meters and the shut offs, the location, uh, the availability and accessibility of usage of it does not meet the standards that I think the town of Irving should have, so I would say no. that I think the town of Irving should have, so I would say no. Proposal number one does not meet it, and I would defer to proposal number two, which would be a relocation with a straight line. So that would be my, my thoughts on it. If you have anything, Jim.
I couldn't agree with you more, sir.
So I think if we relay that to the, to the landowners.
Yeah, I just actually ran into Mr. Sem yesterday, and he asked if I had heard anything, because I told him it would go before the board, who are the Commissioners, and I told him, you know, tonight, Monday night will be the, the meeting. So I would, I could just let him know what he has to do, and they'd have to pull a permit to do a tap, just like it was new construction.
Right, and so there would be a formal proposal, a new proposal for a new service, and that would come in front of us again, and we could move forward with that and get all the permitting needed.
Right.
That's what you want to see.
That is what I would like to see, yeah.
So if you talk to the owner, that's fine, but let's also follow up in writing. And then as soon as he's able to put together that application, we can get it back in front of the board.
Sure.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Want to make sure we didn't miss anything.
Just the grant.
I'm going to skip over the sixth water commitment?
Yes, we'll have that for you at your next meeting.
Review of the Mass Cultural Council grant and senior community center. This is the $2,500 grant?
Correct.
We complied for and were awarded the grant?
And just to articulate for folks watching from home, this is to foster intergenerational bonds between the Irving Senior Center and the Irving Elementary School through entertainment and nostalgic performances, audience participation. And the last sentence and portion is build more cohesive communities. I don't see where we could go wrong.
No. This, well, since the building was put up years ago, it's always been looking to get that engagement between all of the buildings, so.
Absolutely.
This fits right in.
Absolutely.
Perfect. I will make a motion to authorize the acceptance of the Cultural Council, Mass Cultural Council Grant, in the amount of $2,500 awarded to the Irving Senior Center, and to authorize Dulce McAndrews, the Activities Coordinator, to be the signatory on any and all agreements needed.
I will second that.
Anything else, Brian, with that one?
That's it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
That would be all.
That's it.
There was an executive session if we needed it. We do not need it, there's no need for it this evening, and it would have been for informational purposes only, and we can read that without extending a meeting.
Exactly.
We'll come back to that when there's something pertinent, to come back to it.
That being said, would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
I would second that motion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, have a great evening.